Good evening, FCPS community, and welcome to the Frederick County Public Schools reopening plan virtual town hall meeting. For the next two hours, we will share an overview of the draft reopening plan and open up for questions. We are joined this evening by our superintendent, Dr. Terry Albin, and associate superintendent, Dr. Mike Marko. Our panelists for the evening represent four committees that will be introduced once we start that portion of the presentation. I wanted to provide you with the guiding decision-making principles rooted in the development of our reopening plan. They are prioritize the safety and health of students, employees, and families. Make all decisions through an equity lens. Provide high-quality instruction and minimize, I'm sorry, and maximize face-to-face interaction to the greatest extent possible. Support the socio-emotional well-being of students and staff. Communicate concisely, accurately, and frequently. Engage stakeholders in the decision-making process as appropriate. Deploy resources strategically while adapting to ever-changing conditions and requirements. Return to full operation status as quickly as possible when safe health conditions exist. To assist the community in participating in this meeting this evening, we have members standing by their phones to relay your questions to the panelists at that portion of the agenda. Please dial 301-696-6966 at any time during the meeting. We're also still accepting emails sent to F C P S reopens, that's R E O P E N S at F C P S dot org. This evening, we also have a phone line for our Spanish-speaking community to call in questions to our interpreter. Please dial 240-236-8769 to speak with Sonia. We will have tonight's meeting translated into Spanish and posted on the F C P S website next week for our Spanish-speaking community. In addition, we have an interpreter for our community that may be hearing impaired. We've received over 400 emails, questions, and comments prior to the start of the town hall meeting. There is no way to respond to all questions during the time allotted for this evening. So we will have a frequently asked question section set up under the town hall meeting slider on our webpage at F C P S dot org. And we will have it set up for the English version as well as a version for our Spanish-speaking community. F C P S will continue to collect questions and answers to assist in developing a final reopening plan that considers the concerns and ideas shared by our engaged community through July 24. The final reopening plan is scheduled to be approved by the board at their August 5th board meeting. So there's still time to submit your questions and to share with this group so it can be included and considered when we prepare our final. So with that, we will begin the evening with a reopening plan overview by Dr. Terry Albin.
Thank you, Mr. Baughman. So who would have guessed that in 2020, the world would be fighting an invisible enemy that would work havoc on so many of our basic everyday activities? In February, Frederick County Public Schools received its first message from the state regarding the COVID-19 pandemic's potentially devastating impact on public education. By March 12th, the inevitable happened as our state superintendent directed the closure of all Maryland schools. Distance learning and continuity of learning as well as social distancing became common terms. And it wasn't until May 6th that our students and staff learned we would not return to school for the remainder of the 2019-20 school year. And as that 2019-20 school year was closing out, we knew that COVID-19 would continue to impact our schools and community. We knew, and the Maryland State Department of Education told us that we had to prepare for three possibilities. A scenario in which schools would remain closed and we would have to do all distance learning, a normal school opening, or a new hybrid model. And I want to show you right now the decision tree that the state of Maryland gave us to present this. So as you look at this matrix, you can see that they aligned it with the stages of the governor's Maryland recovery plan. We knew from feedback we had received about our continuity of learning in the spring that there were changes we would have to make if we were still going to be in stage one and have all distance learning occurring. And the committee will talk a little bit about that. We also knew that if by chance we were at a place where the state was in stage three and everything was reopened, then we were just going to come back and possibly have some additional safety measures in place. But it would be much more our traditional pattern. And again, we are very familiar with opening school that way. Stage two was the one where they said, if you have to social distance and you have to look at these measures, what's going to happen? So our reopening plan draft really focused on stage two. It focused on what happens if we can only bring half of our students back because we have to maintain six feet. We have to have measures in place for a lot of logistical safety precautions. It is really important that the public understand this draft is a work in progress. Knowing that we had to choose and come up with a plan for all three of these options, I charged four committees to begin working on a draft plan. And I asked each committee to focus on strategic components of what it would look like to reopen our schools. So you're going to hear about logistics, instructions, special services and student supports, and employee relations and communications. Members of the committees included administrators and staff from central office, schools, as well as representatives from each employee association. We also knew that we wanted to include the voice of parents. And we chose to set up a parent advisory group. Rather than putting one or two parents on each workgroup, we brought a collection, a diverse representation of parents who have been actively involved on board committees and staff committees. And we asked them to provide us ongoing feedback as the draft was being developed. I want to extend a huge thank you to all of the people who spent so many hours in June reading guidance, reviewing options, and developing this first draft. It was truly a Herculean effort, and we value the time and expertise that you shared. The first draft of the reopening plan was shared with the Board of Education on July 8. Over the next two weeks, we will be continuing to solicit feedback from our staff and community about the draft plan and the options for reopening. Feedback on the plan is going to be shared through surveys, email, and you can continue to make public comment to the board. Tonight's town hall is strictly for sharing information about this draft plan and clarifying your questions. You're going to hear brief summaries from the committee chairpersons and cabinet liaisons regarding the important work performed by the committee members in developing the reopening plan. I emphasize that this is a draft. Your questions and comments shared through July 24th will help determine the option for reopening that is approved by the board. And even at that time, it is really critically important that the community understand as the virus changes and the impact in our state changes, even if the board were to say, this is the plan we want to implement. This is a public health crisis and changes that come down from the state health department, the governor and state superintendent may have us going into a different version or a different option for this plan. Right now, the board has a meeting scheduled on August 5th to review all of this information and your feedback and to talk about the plan we believe we will put in place going forward. The board did ask at their July 8th meeting to have an additional opportunity to talk about the plan. And in meeting with the board president and vice president today, they are looking to schedule that at the end of July. And it may be possible that they choose to make a decision sooner than August 5th. But you will know that, an announcement will come out once they finalize their plan for when they want to talk about the reopening draft next. And so with that, we will talk more about the next steps for everyone after we hear from each committee and work to address your questions. And with that, I'm going to turn it back to Mr. Baughman.
Thank you, Dr. Albin. Next, we're going to present our committee members with their reports. And as an introduction, from the logistics committee, we have this evening Paul Lebo and Bob Wilkinson. From the instructional committee, we have Kevin Cuppitt and Daniel Lippi. From the special services and student support committee, we have Dana Falls and Lyndon Chambers. And from the employee relations and communications representing committee, we have Donna Claywell and Tiana Hale. So with that, we'll start with the logistics committee.
Okay, good evening. I'm Bob Wilkinson, Director of Maintenance and Operations, and with me is Paul Lebo, our Chief Operating Officer. We're going to pull up our slides here in a minute and show you a summary of our group's activity. But I want to emphasize that the aim of our group was to prepare for welcoming back students and staff and support instruction at whatever level or stage is allowable. And emphasize, of course, the health and safety of our school community was always paramount in our thinking and planning. So as I mentioned, presenting from the workgroup, Paul and Bob, our workgroup included 21 members, and it was a wide array of people. We included administrators, teachers, members of F C P S, the Health Services, Security, Transportation, et cetera. We included the bargaining units too for teachers, administrators, and support staff. So we had a wide array of people who were aware of the needs and the means to best respond to the need, and also how to respond to it the most economically possible. So these 21 members met several times, conversed over the internet. We held meetings both in person and teleconference. And we think we came up with a very good solution that will support both instruction and the health and safety of our community. What we were charged with examining was the light that came out through both issues that were identified by the Center for Disease Control and also Maryland State Department of Education.
I'm sorry, Bob. Paul, can you mute your mic, please?
Cleaning and disinfecting of the school community, the buses, the classrooms, and the common areas. They give suggestions for enhancing the facilities to better allow instruction during this environment. Things about modifying the classroom, transportation, meal service. And you can see in this list, there's a whole array of things that both the federal government, the state government, and F C P S came up with that needed to be addressed so that we believe we can provide an effective and safe educational environment under these conditions. I want to emphasize again that while we used a lot of our in-house innovative thinking, the basis for our actions and thoughts came from the authorities, who are the authorities in their subject matter. CDC put out recommendations, the Maryland State Department of Education put out recommendations. We worked closely with the Frederick County Health Department. I'm actually a maintenance director, so a lot of my direction comes from our professional contemporaries and societies that dictate standards and procedures for this. The American Society for Heating, Refrigeration, Air Conditioning, these engineers put out standards that not only guide the construction and operation of our buildings, but they provided direct guidance over the last few months how to best operate your building in response to the COVID virus. Also, members of our teams were continually in contact with their contemporaries in their professions. Fred, who runs our transportation department, was in touch with the other 24 LEAs, the other 23 LEAs throughout the state. So we were all in touch either, you know, live through telephone or through different community groups to share ideas and see what other people are doing and get the best thinking amongst all of the 24 LEAs or local educational authorities. In our thinking and in our plan, we've tried to represent some key decisions. We realize right up front, and it's been emphasized by both the Center for Disease Control as well as the Maryland State Department of Education, cleaning and disinfecting is paramount. I want to emphasize that our custodial teams have very sound procedures in place. The chemicals that we are currently using are effective against the COVID as well as any other number of hazards that we may face. So the chemicals that we are currently using are effective and they're safe. They're safe for the school environment. They are green seal certified. They're everything you would want in the chemical set that provides safety, but also provides for the everyday well-being of our staff and students. So we're going to work closely with our custodians to identify particularly what we call high-touch areas, areas that in the past may not have gotten as frequent an attention during the day, but now need to be attended to during the day. We'd like to adjust our staffing to bring more people in during the day because in our normal scenario, we have a set of staff that support instruction during the day, but more importantly, come in at night and prepare the buildings for the next day. In this scenario, we want to emphasize the daily cleaning and the disinfecting. We want to make sure that the staff and students are safe and healthy while they're in place. We've looked at facility modifications. For example, due to the ashtray recommendations, we're increasing ventilation in our buildings. And what that means is we're going to bring in more fresh air. We're going to try to flood the areas with fresh air. We're also going to increase our filtration. We've bought supplemental standalone air purification units for our health suites. So we're looking at this in terms of what the recommendations are from the professionals, and we're trying to adapt our buildings as best we can to make them safer. When it comes to student transportation, we realize that's one opportunity where the students are going to be in a group. We've talked with the authorities and determined that a number of 22 students per bus is a safe number that we can transport while maintaining social distancing. We're also going to provide and train our bus drivers to provide cleaning and disinfecting in between their trips and in between their routes so that the environment will be safe. In terms of classroom layouts, as most people are aware, the six-foot separation is currently a standing recommendation. So we're going to change the classroom layout so that the students can attend the class and still maintain that separation. So at all times, we're trying to adjust the environment to provide that separation and also make sure that whether it's the playgrounds, whether it's the classroom, whether it's cafeteria, make sure all those areas are properly cleaned and disinfected. Some of the challenges we still face, quite honestly, when we started seeing other plans released by other authorities, there was a lot of to be determined. It was evident that no one out there had a silver bullet to answer all the questions. So we've done our best to take the existing information, the existing recommendations, and develop a draft plan, as Dr. Albin said. But as you can imagine, as you've watched the news, there's a lot of evolving information. There's a lot of changing requirements. So when it comes to face coverings, health screening, that sort of thing, we have plans in place, but we know that we have to be adaptive as those requirements change. When it comes to the positive test protocol, you know, the state has recommended if someone's exhibiting symptoms, if they're symptomatic, that we should isolate them. And that's something we're working on is finding a place to isolate staff and students who are symptomatic until they can be properly handled. So there's a lot of logistical issues that we've handled. A lot that still need to be ironed out as the requirements come down closer to the time when we might start instruction. Food service, of course, we may have to rely on a combination of eating in the classroom and the cafeteria. We can't go through our normal scenario where we put the kids in the classroom, in the cafeteria in large numbers. So we're working with food service to figure out the logistics of providing students their meals as needed and doing all the things that they do to provide a safe and healthy meal to the student body. Before and after-school childcare is obviously an issue. It's very important to a lot of the members of our community. So we're working closely with the childcare providers to find a way that we can safeguard them before and after. One of the simple things we're doing is we're providing them the same chemicals and cleaning cloths that we provide our custodians. We want to make sure that those staff have access to the same materials and supplies that we have. So we're going to, we're going to go ahead and purchase them and supply them. When it comes to visitors, unfortunately, I think we're going to have to limit to some degree the number of visitors that we allow in the schools. That's just a safe protocol under these conditions, and we're going to try to be prudent in how we do that. We obviously want our schools to be as welcoming as possible to the public. But that's something we'll eventually come out with more definitive guidance on. Community user groups, as many of you may be aware, are groups such as the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, churches that use our facilities. And we're going to have to work closely with those groups to see how we can incorporate them into the use of our facilities. Up front, we imagine it might be a little bit more restrictive than it has been in the past, but that's, that's another issue that we have to define. So again, here's a list of items that while we have plans, we have our thoughts in line, and we have to be adaptive, and we will be. That's the end of my spiel. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Next, we have our instructional committee.
Good evening. I'm Kevin Cuppitt. I'm the Executive Director for Curriculum Instruction and Innovation here in Frederick County. I wanted to share some information around the work that the instructional workgroup has done. Mr. Baughman shared the guiding values that F C P S has been using to move forward. And these were five that the instructional workgroup kept coming back to. Obviously, health and safety was of paramount importance. Decision-making through an equity lens, maximizing the instructional time, and social emotional well-being are all evident in the plans that we've come up with. And the last bullet, returning to full operational status as quickly as possible, was definitely something that we had to think about when we were developing these models, as well as what would happen if we had to return to a more restrictive school setting, as Dr. Albin had indicated. And so we developed instructional models for each of the stages. So most families are certainly familiar with stage three, which is the traditional learning model. Health conditions are such that we'll be able to go back to school full-time. That will be available, but we are also offering a full virtual option for those families that may not be ready to return. Stage one, which would, what would happen if there was a school closure, much like we had in the spring, is of course a full virtual learning model, and I'll talk about how we're improving that over continuity of learning. And as Dr. Albin indicated, as a result, stage two, which requires the social distancing, is the model that we spent a lot of time looking at, and that involves 50% of the students coming back. Again, we will offer a full virtual for that as well. This is the decision-making matrix that Dr. Albin was referring to, and you can see at the top here, social distancing measures in stage two are the, are the, is, was the single biggest driving force for moving to the hybrid model that we created. In addition, there are non-negotiables. They're in a bulleted list down here that came from the state that had to be submitted as part of our plan, including many of these impacting instruction. So some general information, I'm going to talk a lot about stage two and the hybrid model with a full virtual option. So in the hybrid model, we will still focus on social emotional programming for our students. This will be an area of emphasis at all three levels. We are going to return to our more normal grading practices, including giving letter grades. That's different than in continuity of learning where we had the pass and complete. We will do orientations for students who are in both the hybrid and the full virtual option. Attendance will be determined by a number of factors. Obviously, presence in school can't be the only factor because even students who are in the hybrid model will be at school only two days a week. And so things like engagement with activities, joining synchronous instruction, completing work, those types of things will factor into how we determine students being in attendance, which was one of the state requirements. We're also going to start talking about on-ramp and off-ramps for parents to move between models. So if we are in a hybrid and have a full virtual option, what's the process for a student maybe coming out of full virtual and coming back to school versus a student who's leaving the hybrid and going into the virtual? And so those, those on-ramps and off-ramps for when that change can occur will be laid out by each level in the short, in the near future. We also want to let you know that both hybrid and full virtual students are eligible for extracurricular activities and that we have been developing procedures to keep those common instructional materials to be limited, the amount of sharing that might occur, art classrooms, science labs, et cetera. Now, I mentioned that we're upgrading from continuity of learning to the virtual learning model. And so there are a number of things that, that families would experience that would be different than the COL period. Increased work expectations and time commitment for students. We heard from many families that there was not enough new content or not enough to keep their, their kids engaged. And so moving that to be a new expectation is going to be an important part as we move forward. We heard from families, more synchronous instruction through Google Meet will be part of the program. We are moving to a single learning and communication platform, which is Schoology. We did a lot of new types of teacher training to support virtual learning at the end of the last semester, and those trainings occur through the summer and will into the fall. We found some better digital tools, and we'll make more use of some of those to support students at home. And over the summer, curriculum teams and other departments are creating centrally-produced resources that can be, that teachers can grab and, and use and deliver to students so that they can focus more on giving feedback to students or providing that synchronous instruction. Those are all upgrades from continuity of learning. Now, the hybrid model, which has been shared before, simply says that students will be divided into two cohorts. We will keep those families together. Cohort A will come to school Monday and Tuesday, be virtual for the rest of the week, and that'll reverse. Cohort B will be virtual for the first three days of the week, and then they will attend school on Thursday and Friday, with cleaning occurring on Wednesday and Friday. Now, we've had a lot of questions about how this would look. So the elementary staffing models provide a lot of flexibility for schools. The important thing is that parents and teachers, parents and students want to know who their teacher is, and teachers want to know all of the students for whom they're responsible. And so this model is based on a third grade, and you can see that each of the third grade teachers in this model has an A and B cohort. But in this case, there might have been a smaller number of families that opted for the full virtual. And so we can group those students, and all four of the teachers at the grade level can share responsibilities for providing a high-quality instruction to them. Another model, this would be if there were a more significant number of families that went with a full virtual option while we were running the hybrid. There might be enough here that a teacher could be responsible for a full class of students in the full virtual model. That class is similar to what we call a section in middle and high school, and you'll see that when we go to the secondary level. A third option for staffing, and this one would be the, the most unusual for families. We have a number of small schools, and if we had a school, like School A here has two third-grade teachers and School B has three third-grade teachers, there might be a number of virtual students that one of the schools could choose to assign a teacher to, and, and teachers from both of those schools would connect with those students. This, this, these three options together provide a lot of flexibility for elementary schools. And in each of the elementary school principals would be working with their staff to communicate to parents which models they're using. Now, in middle and high school full virtual, we'll simply create sections. So if 25% of, say, ninth graders at a high school want a full virtual option, then a number of sections for things like English nine or algebra or geometry would be created, and they would be assigned to a teacher. We would try to ensure that the course loads for those teachers is similar to other teachers. And we may have to run some of these courses through our Frederick County Virtual School when that's appropriate. So that would be a new experience for some of our families, but it is, has a proven track record of success for working with students at the high school level. Both middle and high school will have an advisory period. These are called different names at different, different schools, but it's a period when students are not in a content area. And this would be a great time for us to work on our social emotional programming, provide school updates, and handle the day-to-day logistics of school so it's not interrupting the content time. Now, in middle school, the full virtual course offerings and expectations are that, that students are going to have seven courses. That'll be in the hybrid, and it would be in the virtual. And you can see that all the core courses are going to be there, and then students will have an can see that all the core courses are gonna be there. And then students will have an exploratory and elective paired with physical education and health education. In addition, you can see where the work requirements under full virtual now look different than in continuity of learning. Students will be attending two online sessions per week for each of their courses. So that's a significant amount of time to be checking in with teachers. They'll have a virtual advisory period if they're in the full virtual model. Students at school would have that in the face-to-face time. That's when they're gonna be completing their assignments. Any work that they do independently would count towards those 30 hours. It's not 30 hours directly with a teacher. So students who are completing projects, writing assignments, et cetera, all that would be factored in when we assign work to students. At the high school level, students will take four courses per semester, as they do now. Now, in the full virtual model, the number of courses that are available may be more limited than in the hybrid and for students who are attending face-to-face. And that could be from a number of factors, staffing, and number of students who are selecting virtual, and maybe even the nature of the content. Some courses just don't lend themselves to a virtual execution, so to speak. Again, high expectation for the full virtual here, that 30 hours a week is going to apply to the high school. Same, you can see here, online sessions per course, virtual advisory period, so that students are aware of what's going on with the school and programming. All of their assignments, again, together, would combine to make that 30 hours. And so that's a rundown of the instructional work group.
Thank you, Dr. Cuppitt. Next, we have special services and student support.
Good evening. I'm Linda Chambers, Director of Special Education for Compliance and Student Support. And my co-chair for our work group was Mr. Dana Falls, the Director of Student Services. We were charged, much like all of the other groups, to focus in and support students prioritizing the health and safety of staff and students as we reopen. Our focus was for our special population students, students such as those with disabilities, IP's and 504s, English learners, students who are identified as homeless, those receiving interventions, and those students on home hospital instruction. So a group of about 55 or so individuals, experts from all across our school system, met together. And within those parameters that we were expected to make considerations, we were very thoughtful of the charge. Some priority themes came forward when we began our work, and they are highlighted here. And the two most important priority themes is that each and every student, in the progress of our reopening, requires social emotional well-being instruction from our social emotional learning curriculums, and appropriate mental health supports for all students in real time. Additionally, as you heard Dr. Cuppitt just speaking, we need to provide flexible schedules and instructional delivery models to these special populations that I referenced. And that means for students who are in these populations, they require safety and health precautions to keep them safe in the instructional model, but increased synchronous, virtual, and/or face-to-face instruction. Because during the time of the school closure through continuity of learning, they may not have been able to have applied all of the instructional supports and accommodations that were required, and they might have had some learning loss, and might require some recovery supports. We had some challenges in our work group, and we wanted to make sure we were upfront to share those with you. And we'll continue to work to hammer out the details, to ensure the safety and the security of all of our students as they come forward and we reopen. It's difficult to gauge the intensity of the students' mental health needs. Children, and you have been home, and we've been navigating our pandemic, it has been difficult, and it has an impact on, on our mental health. We don't know about what the level of school refusal will be for our students because of increased anxiety. And we're struggling a little bit, but we know that we have the answers for balancing the needs of personal protective equipment with students, students with autism, or students who are deaf and hard of hearing, or those with sensory needs or medical sensitivities. So we want to know, what will the negative side effects of the PPE be to these populations? And additionally, many of our students in these special populations require behavioral interventions that may not have social distancing measures, measures applicable at this time. So we're gonna revisit some regulations, like our restraint and seclusion regulation, to ensure that we're able to maintain safety in that. And also, in the different phases of models, some current positions are vacant. And so we need to continue our recruitment efforts. So let's unpack some of our key decisions from our work group. Priority, at all levels, we will be prioritizing social emotional learning curriculum, passed at the elementary and some middle level, and other social emotional curriculums at the middle and high level. For every student, at the same time, while appropriately providing mental health supports that are in real time, as students are experiencing distress of any type, communication open and often and early with families, and the child, and the staff, and, and ability to bring in therapeutic supports in real time. We agreed and thought it was critically important to increase the synchronous instruction, whether it be virtual or face-to-face. And so being flexible for our special populations, we recognize the needs that you have as families that are unique in special populations, and we want to be responsive to that. Attendance will be flexible. Students will be considered president, present if they engage in the instructional activities, no matter the venue. We will be administering delayed special education assessments in a face-to-face environment with school occupancy restrictions have been listed, lifted. The federal government has not changed or waived any of the compliance and regulatory mandates for special education students. So we do have some students who are unable to be, have their assessments completed. And as I spoke about earlier, recovery services for students with IP's will be determined to, in an IP process, where we can take a close look at the continuity of learning and the receipt of that instruction. And did we miss any components of that instruction that we need to provide upon reopening? The accommodations listed on students' learning plans, EL, IP, and 504, will be implemented and provided regardless of the phase of reopening. And flexibility will be given to students who have vulnerable family situations, whether that is illness in the family, job issues in the family, needing different locations for learning. And finally, we will be recruiting teachers to provide supplemental instruction to our populations, because we're going to increase the opportunities for them to receive synchronous, virtual, and/or face-to-face instruction. And that is the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Linda. And last, we'll have Employee Relations and Communications Committee Representative.
Good evening. My name's Tiana Hale, and Donna Claybaugh and I are the representatives from the Employee Relations and Communications Group. Just a moment, and we'll have our presentation available. Please confirm that you're able to see the presentation.
Yes.
Great. So Donna Claybaugh and I really wanted to emphasize what the community needs to know with relation, with regard to the Employee Relations and Communications Work Group. Our group reviewed the effects on policies, regulations, and negotiated agreements due to non-traditional working conditions, as well as screening and safety processes for staff, the recovery of workdays and hours for certain support staff, employee support and resources, and communications to employees. And just so you're aware, a lot of what we did involved resources for employees. What we learned is that concerning the challenges for this group, is that a lot of what we tried to plan for was constantly moving and changing, as the direction that, and guidance that we received from the state and local health departments and the CDC is constantly evolving. With regard to policies, regulations, and negotiated agreements, our group created a return-to-work workplace guide for employees. This is presently available on the FCPS Intranet for FCPS employees. It basically goes over ongoing updates as expectations and opening plans progress. This particular document has been updated and revised several times, and we encourage our staff to continually look to that resource for updated information. Our policy and regulations subgroup also created the Temporary Telework Program Form, which is for employees who are presently able to complete their essential functions via telework. And lastly, we are communicating updates and, and possible waivers for FCPS state and local regulations. We're not looking to modify a lot of our policies and regulations. We're looking to, to address areas by using waivers to meet the needs for our students and staff as we return to school this fall. We also had members of the negotiating units on our team as well. With regard to safety and screening for employees, a lot of that was covered by the logistics group. Our particular portion was to determine ways for our staff to be screened. And what was determined to be the best solution is to offer a passive screening, which means that as staff return to schools and they pick up their badges, they will be given information regarding what it means to return to the building and to be COVID symptom-free, and not having exposure to anyone with COVID. And by swiping your badge and entering the building, that as an employee, you are affirming that you are coming to work symptom-free. There will also be signage available for building entrances. And as always, we'll continue to work with both local and state departments as guidelines continue to change. Next, I'm gonna turn this over to Donna Claybaugh.
Thank you, Tiana. Okay. The recovery workdays were managed by Rob Ledge, who's a senior manager in HR for support staff. He worked with face representation, as well as employees that fell into the work groups of bus drivers, bus assistants, and food and nutrition services employee groups, because they did not have work available during the continuity of learning phase in the previous year. So those employees have completed tasks that are work-related. That information has been communicated to them, as well as their supervisors. And they currently are working on information. Also, as part of our group, we developed support and resources for employees. When we were really looking at this task, what we found was very important for employees to know is the different type of leaves that they have available, and some different information about daycare resources, as well as mental health resources. So we took the information through our research, and we developed some FAQ documents for staff and supervisors. Those documents and resources are also available on Inside FCPS, which is the employee Intranet. They will be updated, receive additional information, and as information changes.
Next, we have employee communications. We are tasked with designing age-appropriate signage in both English and Spanish for schools and offices. Through the Public Affairs Team, we'll also be creating videos to address changes to school buildings and new social norms. And so this particular video regarding the changes to the school buildings, we will actually have footage of what it looks like to approach and enter a school building, what the hallways might look like, and the cafeteria might look like, in hopes of not just afflicting the community and the parents to the building, but also afflicting the staff as to what the building may look like with new signage. With regard to social norms, there are gonna be a lot of new things that, that we'll be doing that we haven't done before. You know, handshakes are out. We know that, that hugs are not gonna be something that we typically do. So we're gonna be looking at new social norms, even considering mirroring other people, so that if you approach someone, even though you're six feet apart, and you could safely remove your mask, if the other person has their mask on, you may choose to keep your mask on, or put your mask on, to help that person feel more comfortable. Because we can't just look at people and understand what their underlying conditions may be. Another recommendation that our team has is a Safe Schools Module. This is a module that is actually slated for the employees who are making up hours from the spring. We are recommending that all staff complete the modules related to COVID-19 safety protocols. There's been a survey developed for staff to get their feedback prior to reopening. And this is gonna help our human resources and our administrators determine the needs for the schools and the different buildings. And lastly, we're looking at creating a sort of toolbox for administrators with talking points and briefing documents to help them be able to get communication out quickly and effectively, and consistently throughout the buildings.
Employee leave programs are available based on the needs of the employees. We've just included some summary information here, but information about each three of these types of leaves, or with regard to ADA accommodations, is available for all to review on the FCPS benefits section of the website. A new category of leave, Families First Coronavirus Response Act, these, this FF-CRA addresses the need for leave for employees related to the diagnosis of COVID-19, either for themselves, or for an immediate family member in their household. There is also a component of the FF-CRA that addresses leave for employees due to lack of childcare related to COVID-19. Information pay for this particular type of leave is also outlined on the FCPS benefits website. As always, FMLA is available for employees that have a serious health condition, or for an employee that is caring for an immediate family member with a serious health condition. ADA accommodations may apply to some employees due to their underlying health conditions. Again, that information is available on the FCPS website, as are all of the forms and documentation required for submission for any of these types of leave. All three of, in, well, for the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, there is some medical documentation that is required for FMLA. Physician statements and information are required. But again, those forms are available, instructions for those forms are available as well. And again, these resources are something that's posted for employees on the FCPS benefits website, and with and would not be on Inside FCPS, the Intranet. These are public documents and public information.
Thank you all for your reports. We will now move to the question and answer session. The way we're going to handle this is we have calls that have come in in English and in Spanish as well as emails that have come in. And so what we're going to do is take a couple of questions from our emails, emails received. Then we'll move to a couple of questions from the phone lines in English and then a couple of questions from the phone line in Spanish. And then we'll move back to our email account. And we'll try to get as many questions answered as possible. So I ask that the panelists be as brief as possible but get sufficient information. Thank you. So, Tanya, do you have our first question?
Hello. Our first question via that came in by email is, what happens if students do not comply with wearing masks in school or on buses? Will these situations be reported to parents and how so?
So we know the importance of wearing masks and we want to work with families because that is a social responsibility as we are in this public health crisis and it is definitely a recommendation about keeping staff and students safe. So one of the things that we want people to realize is that the plan you are seeing is our systemic plan and that our schools will also be looking at the most effective ways for them to follow up on these types of situations. So some schools may choose to have a guidance counselor, reach out and work with the family and talk about how we can resolve this issue. If it's something as simple as, I don't have one, I forgot, we intend to have masks available as was indicated in the plan. And I didn't know if anybody from the logistics work group wanted to expand on that or not.
No, you hit all the highlights and we do have the extra stocks of masks for both staff and students that will be available in the schools and a supply will be on buses as well.
The next question is, will families with multiple children in different grade levels be able to send their children to school on the same days?
And the answer is yes. That was one of the pieces that staff talked about is making sure that families would be put in the same cohort so that you would have one schedule you were trying to adjust to.
Next, we will move, well, it looks like line one is preoccupied, so line three. Sonya, if you could.
Hi, I'm going to ask the question in Spanish and then in English so that way all the families can know what is the question in both languages and you guys can respond. The first question that I have is, tenemos opciones para las clases virtuales si los padres no pueden ayudar a los estudiantes con el material escolar. Do we have some options in case the parents and the families cannot help the students with the subjects because they don't know the subject and they don't know how to help them?
So one of the things that we heard in feedback from the continuity of learning in the spring was the importance of having more time where the teacher would be doing a Google Meet with the students. And so that way, there would be more of that face-to-face virtual interaction that would enable the teacher to provide more assistance to the student than I think our families saw in the spring. The other thing that we've talked about with our administrators is how to possibly have some of our support employees available to do some Google Meet and check-ins and support students in that way. So I think that our families will see the virtual option is much stronger and much more focused on giving students support than what we experienced in the spring.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Albin. Se van a intentar ampliar las reuniones por Google específicas para los estudiantes. Serán más individuales y se proporcionarán asistencias mucho más fuertes de las que se han proporcionado en primavera porque ya estamos un poco más centrados en la educación virtual. Entonces, se darán más ayudas a los padres y a los estudiantes en el otoño. La segunda pregunta es, si se decide tener instrucción online, podemos tener los materiales los lunes por la mañana. De esta manera, las familias y los estudiantes pueden planear la semana. The second question was, if we decided to go towards virtual instruction, can we have the materials on Monday morning, first thing in the morning, so the families and the students can plan their week according?
So I think the caller is asking if they're going to pick the virtual only option, would they have access to the materials right away? And Dr. Cuppitt, do you want to talk about how that's going to work?
Sure. One of the things we heard in continuity of learning is that it was better for families to have a full sense of the work that would be required for the week. And of course, in continuity of learning, teachers were going pretty much day by day and trying to stay ahead of that. What we're going to encourage teachers to do is plan for the virtual for the week. Have options available for students to do as they work through the week and then also check in on those Google synchronous sessions to get support. So it's plan for the virtual for the week. And this applies for our hybrid students who are attending in the hybrid as well. Even though they're going to face-to-face, they still need to know what the work is for the whole week. So plan for the virtual for the week. I can't guarantee that every assignment would be there, but certainly teachers will be well far ahead in their planning than they were in continuity of learning.
Thank you. El señor Cuppitt ha contestado esta pregunta y el plan que hay es que se van a planear las lecciones semanalmente. Van a intentar que se reciban los, lo que necesitan los estudiantes y las familias a primeros de semana, pero van a seguir durante la semana porque la educación virtual por medio de Google va a estar muchísimo más reforzada de lo que estuvo en la primavera. Entonces, se van a tener las tareas para los estudiantes lo antes posible. La segunda, la siguiente pregunta es si va a ser obligatorio llevar mascarillas para los estudiantes en las clases y en las escuelas. The next question is, the families want to know if it's going to be mandatory to wear masks in classrooms and at the schools in general.
So in our current plan, in the draft plan, we use the phrase and the words that were in the CDC guidance. And so on the buses, we are saying they are required to wear the mask because we cannot, if we have one student on each seat, have that six-foot social distance rule. In the CDC guidance, there was an indication that if you have maintained that six feet, masks are strongly encouraged. So we followed the guidance from the plan. I have submitted that direction to our county health department to see if they would be comfortable that that is the safest way to move forward and if they felt that saying masks are required everywhere in the building would be the way to go. And so as soon as we get the feedback from the county health department, we will be making that clarification and making that modification to the plan.
Thank you. Se permitirán las mascarillas, se necesitarán dependiendo del plan que prepare el departamento de salud. Es de eso va a depender, todavía no estamos seguros, pero en cuanto sepamos algo del departamento de salud, seguiremos lo que es obligatorio por el estado de Maryland. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonya. We're going to take a couple of questions from line one.
Did somebody forget to unmute because it sounds like somebody's trying to say something, but I can't hear them?
Yes, Juan is having some technical difficulties, so we're going to have someone else to read the question.
This message is for Dr. Albin. How will distance learning be improved so children are on a full year behind by the end of 2021?
Well, again, I hope as people look at the plan and as they heard the presentation from Dr. Cuppitt, that there was a lot of feedback given to us by the community and by staff on ways that we could improve distance learning. And I can certainly let him outline some of those improvements again. But also, it's really important for the community to know that this summer, our curriculum workshops are focusing on resources and support for virtual learning because we realize that whether we're in the all-virtual or the hybrid model, there's going to be a lot of reliance on using the technology as a way to enable instruction to occur. And so Dr. Cuppitt or Dr. Lippi, if either of you want to share again some of the enhancements that we think will make it a better experience than what folks saw in the spring, please do.
Yeah, so I think the first place that we started was an increase in teacher training around the virtual instruction component. So all teachers were trained in Schoology and the use of Google Meet and even screen casting tools. So they'll be able to create more videos that can go home to students. They'll be able to engage in those synchronous instruction activities and they will be able to deliver their course through Schoology, which will keep materials organized for students and they'll have easy access. In addition, those teachers who are building their skill level there will also be able to get more resources that we're creating, as you mentioned, Dr. Albin, in our curriculum workshop. So one of the things we heard from teachers is it took a lot of time to create these these digital assignments and activities to send home to students. Our team is creating many of those for the vast majority of courses. So now teachers will be able to grab those activities through the Schoology platform, deliver that to students, saves a lot of time so that they can focus on providing feedback to students, checking them with students, doing synchronous instruction. So those are a couple of things that that are happening that I think will make a significant improvement from the continuity of learning. Dr. Lippi, is there anything you'd like to add?
Yes, Arthur, you covered it.
Thank you.
Neighboring counties have already announced that they're going all virtual. Why hasn't FCPS?
The final decision on which option will be approved comes from the Board of Education. And so again, right now, we're getting feedback from the community on that hybrid model and the board is going to listen to your feedback. They are going to look at the data and the information that they're receiving around where our county is and they will be making that decision at an upcoming board meeting. One of the things, though, that again, I want to emphasize with the community is our board could make a decision and if the health circumstances change, we may be in a situation where the state superintendent comes in and makes a decision and we have to be ready to comply and possibly shift gears. So the Board of Education will be approving the plan, I believe, either at the meeting they add in July or at their August 5th board meeting. And again, as soon as we know that, we will get that information out to the community.
We're going to take a couple more questions from the email list.
If there is an outbreak at one school, will schools close countywide or only by individual locations? And what percentage of a school would need to test positive for the school to close?
I am so glad someone finally asked the question about what are we going to do if there's a positive case in a school because we have been seeking guidance from the state health department and our local health department on what that protocol should be. And right now, we haven't gotten the specific, this is what you must do. So we would work in collaboration with the health department, our local health department, and I know they would work in collaboration with the state health department. There was some guidance put out for daycare centers. I assume there will be similar guidance coming for schools. I do know that many of our teachers and administrators who lived through the H1N1 virus, and I'm going back quite a few years with that one. At that time, there was this notion of a certain percentage of people who are absent and then you would close down the school to prevent spread of disease or whatever. I don't think in the case of COVID, because it is so new and so different, that the the response is going to be, well, it has to be a certain percentage of people. There have been a lot of questions also about quarantining. You know, if if someone gets it in the school, are all the people around them going to be expected to quarantine? And again, the definition of close contact and how the health officials want us to apply that, we will be relying on their expertise to help us in making those decisions. So that's one question we still do not yet have the exact answer to.
We're going to now take two questions from line two.
Okay, can you hear me okay? Awesome. Okay, so this caller called with a question about their child with autism. They asked, what services will be implemented this year for their type of student, whether or not they will still be virtual or in person?
Dr. Chambers, would you like to respond to that one?
Sure. So our students who have learning plans, individual education plans, 504 plans, that have students with autism, your model of what's indicated in your plan will be how we will provide the service to you and we will also be engaging you meaningfully through the whole process to invite you to a meeting to discuss the concerns that you have in order to have your child be able to be coming into the program and the school setting with increased opportunities, albeit instruction that is virtual and or face-to-face. So you'll be able to work closely, if your child has that support, with the school team, the administration and the case managers or providers of the service to be able to determine exactly what that will look like and whether that requires special transportation or other modes of related services. Additionally, once your child is acclimated into the instructional phase of reopening, the team will convene a meeting and talk specifically about how your child may not have been able to access learning during the school closure from March forward until the end of the school year. And we might be suggesting to help with additional services and supports that include those supports that would also help your child with their social, emotional anxiety. that include those supports that would also help your child with their social, emotional anxieties or concerns in coming back to school after being away from his teachers and his peers. So we want to engage you with that relationship development and the support in a positive way in order to make sure that your child feels comfortable in coming back and getting the help they need.
Okay, second caller said, if American Pediatrics said that it is safe to go back to school, why aren't we opening the schools?
So again, we have received guidance from many experts in the health field. And it will be the hard task of our Board of Education to look at all of the guidance and to look at where we are in our own community and where we are in our state before making that decision. And so I know that they will weigh all of the information and the data that they have available, as well as the feedback from the community in making that decision. And so that decision will be coming soon. But again, I want to remind everyone, because we've been living through this for many months now, this is a very fluid situation. And a decision that is made could change if the circumstances and the situation in the state drastically changes. And I think we're seeing that right now in several of the states in our country.
Line three.
Toda la información que se ha dado en esta reunión podría ser traducida al español? Es la posibilidad de translate all the information that has been given in this meeting to Spanish? So the Spanish community can be aware of what was said in this meeting?
Mr. Bothman has indicated, and Mr. Bothman, if you want to talk about what's gonna happen and how folks will be able to see this entire town hall in Spanish?
Good evening. Yes, we will take this town hall meeting and deliver it to our translation department, who will translate this entire town hall meeting into Spanish. And then we will post the link on our webpage so that the community members can go and view the entire presentation in Spanish. We are expecting to have that posted sometime next week.
Thank you. Si, toda esta reunión va a estar traducida al español. Esto se pondrá en una email al que podrán acceder en la página web de las Escuelas de Frederick. Esta traducción aparecerá en la página web más o menos alrededor de la semana que viene.
Another question is, if the school reopen, whether it's full-time or in a hybrid mode, and a student has a health issue, will they have the option of doing full virtual instruction? Si el estudiante tiene un problema de salud, tiene la posibilidad de hacer una instrucción completamente virtual sin tener que ir a la escuela?
So if I can address that, Dr. Albin? Students who have health conditions will have two options based on a recommendation from their doctor. The first option would be for them to participate in full virtual instruction. The second option would be depending on their health needs, they may need additional one-to-one support. And that would come through home and hospital teaching. So the doctor can make a recommendation for home and hospital teaching, and then we would provide educational services through home and hospital teachers.
Thank you. Si el estudiante tiene un problema de salud, tiene dos opciones. Una pueden elegir hacer completamente instrucción virtual. Y la segunda opción puede ser tener un apoyo completo adicional para el estudiante. Esto puede ser mediante un profesor ayudándole desde casa o virtualmente. Eso decidirá dependiendo de la situación de cada estudiante. Pero si tienen la posibilidad de hacer completamente instrucción virtual. Thank you.
Line one.
Has a weekly hybrid model been considered? For instance, one cohort attending Monday through Thursday with facility cleaning on Friday, which would allow the facility to naturally be sanitized over the weekend?
I believe Dr. Lippi has answered this question before. So, Dr. Lippi, I'm turning it to you.
Thank you, Dr. Albin. We looked at multiple different types of hybrid models. The week-to-week was one of them, every other day was one. And we settled on the two-day-a-week that are in consecutive order based on teacher feedback and the desire to have consistency with the students two days in a row, get them set up for their virtual learning, and then have them come back. So that if they were on a week-to-week setting them up, the teachers didn't feel the consistency was there to keep the instruction moving the way they could if they did two days a week.
How will schools handle contact tracing and how will they notify parents and students?
We would reach out to the local health department, and they would be the ones who would guide us in that process and how the contact tracing would then go. And we would work with them in any outreach or communication that we had to have with the community. And I don't know if our employee relations and communications group got any additional information on that that you want to share?
Good evening. We do not have any additional information to share regarding that topic at this time. But as soon as resources become available, we will post them both on the internet and on the intranet for employees.
We'll have two questions from the email list.
Is there a plan for FCPS to hire more psychologists and counselors to be available to meet students' needs?
Our budget for the current school year was approved by the board. And there were some additional positions in there for mental health support. But at this time, we don't have additional funding to add additional full-time staff. Many of the grants that we are receiving, you cannot add benefited positions because, for example, one of the grants we have, you have to expend all of the funds by October 30th. So I know the community has been hearing about additional CARES funding that we have received, but that doesn't always allow us to hire additional staff.
If I can add, due to the force of the Board of Ed and Dr. Albin, we have three new psychologist positions that we are working to fill right now. And in addition to that, a behavior specialist and four behavior support assistants to work with our most challenged behavioral needs at the elementary level.
Another question from email. If we adopt the hybrid model, what childcare options will be available? And will FCPS be able to assist with them, specifically with the off-days for working parents?
If the board decides to go with the hybrid model, we have reached out to our daycare providers and have talked to them about before and after care and working to make sure that they are prepared to assist families in addressing this model. At this time, we don't, we aren't able to say, you know, what our role in that would be other than if we are in the hybrid model, we would continue to support those that we work with who do the before and after care, just as we have in the past.
Okay. So this question is about lunchtime. The caller asked, would the children be able to eat outside so that they can have open air since they will be removing their mask? Or can we consider a half-day?
Mr. Lebo, I'm gonna let you handle the half-day question and why that was problematic. And I don't know if your committee talked about outdoor eating opportunities. I know that that may be available at some schools but not others. And once again, supervision becomes a challenge there.
Absolutely. There was discussion early on about the correct model for instruction and how could we support that logistically. And one of the options that we did look at was a half-day option. And unfortunately, the ability to transport all of our students in a half-day model, so we had all students present in the building, was not logistically feasible. And so we were unable to explore that any further. We did not look at lunch outside as an option. Certainly, we can do a little more digging to provide some resources for administrators if that's an option that they want to explore. There's certainly nothing in the CDC guidance or the guidance from the state that would preclude that from happening. But as Dr. Albin mentioned, obviously, the safety and security of our students is also a concern in addition to the issues surrounding COVID-19. And so there would be a lot of considerations for a school, probably most notably, the proper supervision of students in large groups outside. But we will certainly take a closer look and provide some resources for our administrators with that question.
All right, and our second question. This caller asked, what are the plans for extracurricular activities? And when do you plan on starting sports backup?
I'm gonna turn that over to Dr. Lippi because I know he's been working closely with our return-to-play committee.
Thank you, Dr. Albin. Our return-to-play committee sent out guidelines yesterday. We are hoping to start summer activities, some conditioning and re-acclimatization next week. Schools are working on their plans for that now. We'll be bringing students in groups of 15. They'll be working with a coach. They will be socially distanced and have to wear masks. The goal is to get as many groups out there and active as we can. The decision for sports in the fall and extracurricular activities is still under determination at the state level. So we're waiting for guidance there. But we are excited to get our athletes back on the field and get them conditioning and working, get in-acclimated.
And, Dr. Lippi, there were guidelines put out for youth sport camps that we would be adhering to, as well as guidance from MPSSA in this area, correct?
Correct. Our RT plate, our return-to-play committee had the health department represented on it. We had MSP SSA guidance, and we use the CDC guidance as our tools. There is a state, Maryland State Health Department code for youth sports that was used. We use that in consultation with Dr. Callpepper at the Frederick County Health Department to make sure that our procedures were in line with what they see there and with the conditions in Frederick County.
We're going back to line one.
Okay, this caller was concerned with how we are actually keeping the children safe. Who is sanitizing and cleaning desks and chairs between classes? How are bathrooms and face covering, proper face covering use being monitored? Et cetera.
Mr. Lebo, do you want to talk a little bit about some of the protocols that have been determined and those that are yet to be finalized?
Absolutely. In partnership with the instructional work group, one of the biggest areas was to try to limit movement throughout the building to the greatest extent possible. Obviously, this is a lot more feasible at the elementary level where classes tend to stay together in groups and don't switch classes. And at the secondary level, that created a little more challenges. But the instructional work group is really looking for some innovative ideas to limit that movement to the greatest extent possible. There is an acknowledgement that any class change at the secondary level would not allow for cleaning in between, cleaning of desk surfaces in between class changes. And so the recommendation is that there is a focus on wearing of face coverings and personal hygiene. So ensuring that there's always adequate supplies of handwashing materials in our restrooms, that there's the availability for students to utilize them because as the health department and the CDC have reiterated routinely, handwashing and personal hygiene is one of our best methods of defense to combat COVID-19. And so we want to reiterate that with our staff and students as well. We have also procured hand sanitizer for our classrooms, again, as an alternative method when handwashing is not available. Again, handwashing is the primary method. And Dr. Brookmeyer has been on TV numerous times talking about that, that handwashing is our most effective measure to protect against COVID-19. In addition, we have identified and are working with each administrative team and their custodial staff to clearly identify high-touch surfaces. And so those high-touch surfaces will receive routine cleaning and disinfecting throughout the day. And we're also looking at other options to limit the number of high-touch surfaces. So as an example, a light switch in a classroom. Can we limit that so only the teacher would turn the lights on and off if they needed to have that on or off for a presentation? If we limit that to just the teacher touching that light switch, it is no longer a high-touch surface. So the custodial staff doesn't have to prioritize that multiple times throughout the day. And they can maintain that on their normal cleaning and disinfecting cycle. So that's just some of the examples of the protocols that have been put in place and are being considered. And again, this is continuing to evolve. And our administrators and lead custodians are well-versed in cleaning and disinfecting. And we'll have already done and will continue to do a great job of identifying those surfaces and mitigating this to the greatest extent possible.
If some classes are not available for the online learning, how will parents know which ones are available? And will they know before they pick an option?
Do you know if that was a question for the high school level?
Yes.
Okay, Dr. Cuppitt, turning it over to you.
Yeah, so staff are currently identifying which courses they don't feel would be conducive to a virtual environment. That list is almost complete. Parents would be aware of that. So if a student was selecting the full virtual option and one of those courses was there, the school would certainly work with them to find a substitute for that course. And who knows, maybe that course would be moved into the spring semester for the student. And if we're back in, you know, full operation, then maybe they could access that. So it's not a significant, well, I wouldn't say it's not a significant number, of course. There's a good number on the list. But we don't think it's going to be difficult to make sure that students have schedules that keep them on track for graduation. And so we don't think that's going to be at risk at all. It just might be a preference course in an elective area that they may not be able to have. Dr. Lippi, did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, if, when students choose the virtual option, counselors will still work with families and students on their choices. So if there's a need to make a change in the schedule to something that we're concerned the student may not want, there will be contact with the family to talk through the options of what they have available.
Okay, with that, we'll go to line three for one question.
Hi, sorry, I was taking care of a call. The question is, ¿Cómo van a ser las clases preparadas para cuando se vuelva a la escuela? How are the classes going to be set up when the students go back to school?
Do you know if the caller meant the schedule of classes? Or if they meant how the class- Do you know if the caller meant the schedule of classes or if they meant how the classroom is going to be set up when students return?
I think it's how the classroom is going to set up because they, they are concerned of if they are going to keep the distance. They're more concerned about the safety of the students, the children.
So this is Dr. Wilkinson, Director of Medicine and Operations. Thanks for the question. We've done some work with the school staff and the custodians in particular to look at ways to set up the classroom furniture such that we can maintain a six foot separation. The six foot separation is the standard guidance that we've been planning for, for a while. Again, as Dr. Albin mentioned, all these things are subject to change, but what we've looked at is a way to arrange the furniture to do that. And what you have to keep in mind is it appears to be feasible in that if we go with the A and B groups, we're already dealing with half of the classroom population. And then if some of the students, I'm sorry, if some of the parents opt for the full distance learning, that further reduces the number of students in the classroom. So we think given the reduced number per day in the classroom and the way the classrooms are set up, that we can easily configure that. It's just a matter of arranging the classroom furniture in such a way that we can do that. At the elementary level, there are certain classes like art that may have to be accomplished in what we refer to as art on a cart, meaning the, the students may stay in their classroom and the art instruction and materials may be brought to them. And the result for us with that is that that frees up the art classroom, which is typically a larger space to use when we have other space constraints posed by a conventional classroom or special breakout sessions. So it's going to be an individual school task to figure that out. We'll provide them guidance, but we fully believe the administration, the teachers and the custodial staff will find a way to arrange the classrooms such that we can have safe, social distancing and still have effective instruction.
Thank you. Las clases normalmente van a estar preparadas con seis pies de distancia, que es lo que la regulación específica. Va a depender principalmente de cada escuela. Individualmente depende de cómo lo quieran preparar, pero siempre pensando en la seguridad de los estudiantes. En la escuela elementaria, por ejemplo, en las clases de arte va a ser un poco dependiendo de lo que la escuela decida. Con los estudiantes yendo a clase solo dos días y la separación de esos dos grupos, eso va a hacer que el número de estudiantes en cada clase sea muchísimo menor. Entonces va a ser más fácil distribuir, mantener los seis pies de distancia. Otra pregunta es, ¿How would they choose the students that will go Monday and Tuesday or the students that will go Thursday and Friday? ¿Cómo se van a elegir a los estudiantes que van a ir a la escuela los lunes y los martes o los estudiantes que van a ir a la escuela los jueves y los viernes?
Dr. Cupid, do you want to talk about the factors going into assignment to a cohort?
Yeah, so cohort creation will start at the high school level. We're doing that because again, we need to ensure that, that students are on track with their coursework. And so we felt that scheduling at the high school would be the, the critical area first. After that, as we mentioned earlier, families will be kept together. So once the cohort creation occurs at high school, middle schools will then create cohorts based on that all the way down to the elementary level. One of the things that school, well, a number of things that school administrators would look at then is students with specific needs that have been identified. It might be groupings for an intervention or something like that. So they're, they're going to give attention to, because there's going to be a number of kids across the district who are going to fall into the cohort based on an older sibling. But there are going to be plenty of students where there's a lot of flexibility to do that. So trying to develop cohorts and provide need and then balance in those classrooms so that we can maintain social distancing will be the biggest considerations. Dr. Lippi, if you have any additional, feel free to weigh in.
Básicamente, las familias se van a mantener juntas. Van a ir a la escuela, los niños van a ir al que pertenezcan a una estructura familiar. Van a ir a la escuela los mismos días. Se va a intentar, esto se va a basar principalmente en los estudiantes de high school, de la escuela del instituto, porque estos estudiantes son los que tienen un horario diferente. Entonces, el resto de los familiares se van a mantener en ese mismo horario. Esto va a permitir que las clases sean más pequeñas, como hemos dicho anteriormente, y que se puedan mantener los seis pies de distancia entre los estudiantes. Thank you. Do I have time for one more?
We'll come back to you for the.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to take a couple from the email listing.
Will the virtual option be guaranteed? Can it be taken away? And if so, how much in advance will be, will we be notified as parents so we can remove our child from class?
Dr. Cupid, I'm going to ask you to answer that because I don't think the intent is that we would offer the all virtual and then pull it away. But I know we also sometimes have responsibilities and requirements that go into virtual schooling. So if you would please.
Yeah, so our intention is for this school year to have the virtual option available, whether we're in stage two, which is a hybrid model, or we move to stage three where all students return, because we knew that some families may not be ready for that. So, so the way that we've set the model up is we feel that the hybrid model and the way that we're assigning students to virtual instruction will allow us to maintain that if we move into stage three and students all start coming back. I, I don't know if that necessarily means a course change for spring semester or some things like that, but it is our intent to work out that virtual model through the, through the school year itself.
Next question from email. Is it FCPS's intention to force kids to take COVID tests?
COVID testing is not part of our screening protocol. And again, if a student was exhibiting symptoms and referred, I would have to defer to the health department as to whether or not testing would be required or if they would simply tell the family that the child then had to stay home for a quarantine period. But we'd have to get that from the health department.
Line one.
How will parents and families be supported in how to teach their children during virtual instruction?
Dr. Cupid is nodding his head. He's anxious to respond.
Well, so the instructional work group certainly realized it was a significant challenge for families to support students. Number of courses, different teachers. And so there's a couple of things that we're doing to, to try to help support families. Dr. Libby may even add a couple of these. All students, whether they're in the virtual, the hybrid, will have a virtual mentor. Now, in the hybrid model, that'll be the classroom teacher. And in the, in the full virtual, it could be a classroom teacher or other staff. And so those mentors will be there to support not only the students, but the families as well. In addition, we're, we're building up the number of resources that we have available. For instance, so parents can get familiar with Schoology or Google Meet, because they'll need to understand, especially for our youngest learners, how those platforms work. And so how can they help their child navigate and get the assignments that they need done, completed and submitted? In addition, our curriculum staff are creating more what I would call instructional based videos. So we especially heard frustration around something like mathematics instruction. And so our, our teams are creating videos that would face forward to a student that would show a teacher discussing mathematical concepts or showing problem solving. So those will be available to teachers to use as well. Dr. Lippi, did you want to add anything?
Two unique options that we're looking at is that we are working with principals to consider the idea of offering office hours after the school day at different times when teachers are, would offer them in the afternoon or the evening for parents and students to get on synchronous instruction with that support content teacher to work with students outside of the regular school day. We're also looking at trying to create where we can full resource days, meaning that there is a location where a student can log on to a classroom and work with a content teacher at that particular time, that schools may be able to work it out so they have a room staff for most of the day for students to be able to call into if there are, if there is a concern.
If children have a doctor's note to not wear a mask, will the school abide by that?
Again, we would consult with the local health department in terms of what that appropriate protocol would be.
Okay, I'll go to the next question. A caller asks, are the results for the parent survey going to be posted? And how much of an impact are their answers going to make to the plan?
When we have the good discussion with the board, if they want us to share percentages around the feedback from the survey, we would be able to do that. We certainly would not be able to have an analysis of all the comments done in the short turnaround time period between the survey ending and the presentation to the board. I think that the feedback we are hearing from the community and from staff will be very important to the board. If it's anything like the email they have been receiving, there are some people advocating strongly one way and some people advocating strongly another way. And so again, this will be a hard decision that our board has to make because not only will that feedback be something they consider, and I know it matters very much to them, but they also will have to take a look at the current circumstances around health, the information that's being provided and the guidance that's being given by the CDC and our local health officials. So feedback from the community absolutely matters, but the board has to weigh many different pieces as they make this decision.
Okay, second question. A caller asks, they stated that they had been tested for COVID and it took them 11 days to get a result. They want to know how will the school deal with that kind of delay?
Again, some of these questions and these specific circumstances are difficult for us to have all of the answers to right now. I have heard that there have been times when someone has had symptoms, they've been asked to quarantine until the test result is in. So again, we would be reaching out to the local health department and asking the question and getting the information from them as to what protocol would be the safest for us to follow for our staff and our students.
Dr. Albin, if I may, during the time when the student, if the student was ill demonstrating symptoms, then they, most likely they wouldn't be in school anyway. So we would either be providing virtual instruction or, and we would, we would put in place home and hospital teaching.
Okay, we have a question from email. How would the hybrid option work for middle school students who go in person two days a week? Would the seven classes be split between the two in-person days?
So I think first I will just say, Monday and Tuesday is one group of students. Thursday and Friday is a different group of students. So it's not the same students coming back. In terms of the seven classes and how they're handled, I'm going to turn that over to our scheduling expert, Dr. Lippi.
Thank you, Dr. Albin. The middle school schedule is going to look a little bit different. We're going to run six period days, so we have a little bit longer instructional time. And so they will have their four content areas, math, science, social studies and English, and one of their exploratories during the first five. And then they will rotate PE and their elective course every other day. So if they're coming to school two days a week, on one day they'll have PE, on the next day they will have their elective. And they will have six learning blocks during the day instead of the seven, but they still will have seven courses overall.
Another email question. Should there be a confirmed case of exposure in the school building? Will students and staff who came in direct contact with the individual be expected to quarantine for the recommended two week time period per CDC guidelines? And if so, how would this look for staff?
So again, we would need to rely on the guidance from our local and state health department about the actual procedures to follow in a specific circumstance. I want to thank Mr. Falls for sharing that, you know, if students are in quarantine, virtual still becomes an option for them. So it doesn't mean they would not be attending. And for staff, once again, if you're quarantined and we can continue to have you interact virtually, we will. But I know that HR will also, human resources, sorry, didn't mean to use the acronym, will also work with our employees in terms of how that works and, and what that looks like for them.
Line one.
What will the full virtual learning look like for the new school year? Will teachers be teaching fully online? And will teachers be in the school every day to support families, to be accessible and to support families?
So is the caller asking us about the red stage one, everybody is doing virtual all the time? Or are they talking about if we're in the yellow or the green, but my child is doing all virtual?
Stage red.
Stage red. Dr. Cupid, want to talk about what that's going to look like?
Yeah, so if we go into a full school closure and we're not allowed to access the buildings like we were in the spring, then it would work similar to what happened in continuity of learning. Teachers would be working remotely if we're prohibited from entering the building and they would engage in the full virtual model, just as it's been described here this evening, which would include synchronous, synchronous instruction, pushing digital videos for instruction, accepting student work, managing the course from Schoology. In the spring, we also had schools make excellent use of folks that were not classroom teachers, specialist IAs, instructional assistants, excuse me, who provided additional support. Our special educators and our Yale teachers did the same. And so that suite of services that we delivered virtually and continuity of learning would occur in the virtual learning if we moved into the red stage.
I do want to expand a little bit on what Dr. Cupid said though, because I have had some teachers reach out to me and say, if we're in all virtual, I really want to be able to get into my classroom. There are things I want to do. And last spring, it was the state superintendent who indicated buildings had to be closed to staff and the public. And we were only allowed to have essential personnel going in and out of our buildings. Right now, the state of Maryland is in stage two. So the state superintendent will probably give us more discretion locally about our buildings. For example, right now, you can travel freely. Back in the spring, for many months, we had only essential travel, non-essential travel was prohibited. So there is a possibility that even if we're in an all virtual model, we could still have staff who want to access the building to provide that instruction. We could have staff who want to come in and do some collaborative work and do some professional learning. So much will depend on the stage of recovery that Maryland is in and how much accessibility we can allow for our buildings.
We're going to move to line three.
Las familias están interesadas en saber qué pasa si se realiza la instrucción dos días, un grupo y dos días el otro grupo, qué pasa con los padres que tienen que ir a trabajar. The families would like to know, in the case of the hybrid, which is two days, some students two days, some students another two days, and the families. And the families, the parents need to work, how are they gonna do that? Are they gonna have any extra support for that?
So we are talking to our daycare providers. I know Mr. Lebo and I were on a call today with the YMCA. They are looking at these models and trying to figure out ways that they could support families with needing not just after daycare, but care on those days. Dr. Cupid's team has an early childhood consortium that we belong to that has daycare providers represented there. And they are meeting with them to talk about options that we could look at. Perhaps instead of having to sign up for a full slot, you could sign up for days versus having your child there for a full week. So we can't fully answer those questions right now, but we are working with our daycare providers to look at what options will be available for families should this hybrid model be what we move to.
Thank you.
Dr. Albin, I can just add too that we are also developing some resources to support daycare providers with supporting students if they were engaged in virtual instruction while in the care of the daycare provider. So we're putting together some information and materials for them so that they feel a little more comfortable, because we did hear from many of our daycare providers that they weren't familiar with certain things like Schoology. And so how can they support those students when they're in the care?
Thank you. La respuesta a esta pregunta no la saben con seguridad. Pero lo que sí se sabe es que el doctor Cupid y otros profesionales están intentando encontrar opciones que puedan ayudar a las familias. Están intentando encontrar información y materiales para proporcionarlas. Han hablado con diferentes organizaciones que se dedican al cuidado de los niños para ver si se pueden hacer por días, en vez de por semanas. Están intentando encontrar soluciones para estas familias que necesitan más apoyo en esta situación, si los padres tienen que trabajar. Más información de esto se tendrá cuando se sepa qué situación se ha elegido para el otoño, para las clases de otoño. Another question is qué va a suceder con la educación técnica de CTC? Esta educación proporciona a los estudiantes prácticas para tener, que les van a ayudar para los grados, para la graduación, para obtener los puntos que necesitan para graduarse. What's gonna happen with the CTC for high school students? In the cases that they need internships and they, for graduation requirements? How is this gonna be supported by the school or how their students are gonna be able to do this?
So I know this is something our instructional group talked about. Dr. Lippi, Dr. Cupid, who wants it?
Dr. Pearl, who is supervisor for that content area, has been working with Mr. Concepcion, the principal at CTC. They're looking to see what they can do with the courses if we have to go virtual and how that will look for students. There are some concerns about some of the courses in terms of being able to do the work outside in the virtual environment, but they're working through those problems. And also depending upon what stage we're in, some of the educational internship opportunities are still available and they're still allowed to go to those. Depending upon what those services have and what they're allowed to do, the guidance will tell us whether or not they can participate in the internships. But it is a problem they're working on, Dr. Cupid.
So we also have some specialized software that are used in a number of these programs. And we've been working with our Department of Technology Infrastructure to try to virtualize that software so that it could easily run on a student's Chromebook at home. When they're in school, certain hardware requirements are necessary to make that software run. But we're moving with all possible speed to try to convert that over to this virtualized model so that all students will be able to access that software.
Thank you. El doctor Pearl y el señor Concepción, que es el director de CTC de la Escuela Técnica, están intentando encontrar opciones y posibilidades para poder realizar las prácticas que los estudiantes necesitan todavía. No hay más respuesta necesaria, pero en los próximos días más o menos encontrarán la manera de poder realizar estas prácticas. Algunas de ellas todavía se realizarán, pero todo dependerá de los pasos que se tengan que seguir en el estado de Maryland. También hay unos programas virtuales especiales en los que se está trabajando ahora para reforzar la educación virtual. Thank you.
Thank you. We're five minutes away from eight o'clock, so the last two calls will, the last two questions will come from line two.
Okay, this caller asks, if some students, due to special circumstances, are not required to wear the face mask, how will a school handle if a parent does not want their child to be present there? Or if a teacher does not feel comfortable to teach in that classroom? So again, we really want to work with our families and we want to respect guidance they've received from their doctor. And I know that we would also work to equip staff with the appropriate protective equipment. I'm going to see if Dr. Chambers wants to add anything, because I don't know if some of these questions came up in the special services group. Again, we're going to be highly reliant on the relationship with our health department in looking at these specific circumstances. But Dr. Chambers, if you wanted to add anything else?
Thank you, Dr. Albin. Our work group did discuss this a bit, and we've actually reached out to Mr. Lebo's work group for logistics. We're going to meet again next week and further unpack that concern, because there are some students, because of medical conditions or because of disability or medical sensitivity, which won't be able to wear the typical face covering. So we're looking at alternatives, face shields that might not create a face covering quite like that. So we are looking into that and we're further investigating that and working closely with the guidance from the CDC and the state of Maryland and other experts across the nation that support students with medical needs that might have some recommendations like that.
One last question from email. If a teacher becomes ill, how will her or his classes be handled? By a substitute?
I'm not sure if this is instruction or logistics or employee relations, because I know we will be working with our substitute teachers, but I also know that our administrators have been looking at flexible staffing, so who wants it?
Well, I guess one way to think about this, it will depend on that teacher's responsibility. So if I'm already assigned a virtual cohort and I'm too sick to serve that class, then we would have to find a way to use other teachers in the school to support that. Now, a lot of that can be done through the blueprint courses that we have available, those are centrally created. So if that teacher teaches English nine, a lot of those materials and stuff are already set up for that course. So by linking courses together, teachers could ensure that those virtually planned resources are available. So the teacher's out for one day, remember, students will have already received a large amount of the work and assignment that they have. So it might require somebody else in the school to hop onto a synchronous session for them. It could be that they would see a recording of something that another teacher has done. So that could be challenging. Extended absences are something that would most likely require some kind of substituting to occur.
And that brings us to the conclusion of our meeting this evening. Dr. Albin, would you like to make any closing comments or?
I would. First of all, I want to thank everyone who called in or emailed very thoughtful questions. And I hope that you can see by the way our committee members responded that this has been a very long and thoughtful process that these work groups have undertaken. But there are still many other pieces left to put in to finalize. I also want to remind the community that when the state gave us this direction to begin to put together recovery and reopening plans, they aligned that requirement with the three stages of recovery in the roadmap that has been put out by both the governor and the Maryland State Department of Education. The idea was if you are in stage one, you are looking at an all-virtual option. If you are in stage two, you are looking at a hybrid option. And if you are in stage three, then we're looking at school as we've known it before COVID. Our board will be looking at all of those options at a time when, right now, Maryland is in stage two. And again, because that hybrid model is the most unique and requires the most changes to the way we typically do business, that's been where a lot of the emphasis has been. If you've been paying attention, you know that there have been some school boards that have said, well, even though Maryland is in stage two, we don't know if we want to go with the hybrid model. And they've opted to go back to a virtual-only model. I am sure that our board will have similar conversations as they move forward. Even if the board were to say, we want to start with an all-virtual option, the school system will continue to expand our look at this virtual, the hybrid option. Because again, if we haven't learned anything else from COVID, we have learned that things change, circumstances change, and requirements change. So while we may start in red, all virtual, there may come a time during the year when we're ready to move in to the hybrid model. And we want to make sure that our staff and our leaders and our central office and everyone who has to support our students is ready to move in to a different phase. And so that's why I hesitate to say we're going to bring a final plan to the board, because we will continue to refine this plan based on feedback, based on updated guidance, based on new research that comes out of the scientists who are studying this from the schools across the globe who have reopened and what have they learned. So this plan will continue to be a living document that's changed throughout the year. And so I hope also, as you've listened to these questions, you realize that what our board is facing is very challenging and a very difficult decision for them. So please continue to share your feedback, that matters to them a lot. And we will continue to engage you in this process as we move forward. And Mr. Boffman, with that, I'm going to ask you if you want to talk about where people can continue to find information if they want it.
Thank you, Dr. Albin. We will be posting information on the FCPS website. We do have a banner that is specific to this town hall meeting so that we can respond to some of the additional questions that we were not able to answer this evening. But we will also be posting information, updating information on the website regarding the reopening plan. So stay tuned, check FCPS. And we will be posting information in Spanish as well as in English to engage our entire community. Thank you all for your time this evening, thank you for your questions and comments, and thank you panelists and the support team to make this happen. We thank you and we hope you have a great evening. Good night.